Dub push me, turn on pump me.
You and your brown suit.
I have to wait till seven. There you go.
Four, three.
I'd like to call to order the January twenty-third meeting of the City of Flugerville City Council meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please stand for the pledge in moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. Trista, do we have any public comment? Is there anybody here wishing to make public comment? In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment can be made. That is not published on the final agenda, but can only be heard by city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by city council. Anybody present wishing? Nope. Alright. Consent agenda, council.
Mr. Mayor, I would request that we pull items four F and four G. That's Fred and George.
Four F and four G. Trista, may I read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez. Items four F and four G have been pulled from the consent agenda. All remaining items may be acted upon in a single motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Mr. Rogers? Motion carried unanimously. Our next item, hold on, is discuss and consider action to make appointments to the Flugerville Community Development Corporation. At the last meeting, we had appointed board members, and two things have happened since then. Well, actually, at that time, we were wanting to appoint someone to Mayor Pro Tim Doug Weiss's position, which he was relinquishing, but it wasn't on the agenda, so we had to move it to today's meeting. Also, we had a candidate who was appointed last time that resigned before actually taking her position on the board. So we have that open position, which is place, I'm not sure which, place four and place seven. Trista, which is the one that?
Place four has a term ending of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Place seven is a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
And which was which in terms of the?
Place four was Mayor Pro Tim Weiss's position. Place seven is the newly vacant position.
Okay, alright. So this evening, we can take action on place four. At that time, I'm not sure if that's the case tonight, Councilman Ruiz was wishing to be appointed to place four. Also, looking back at the voting results of that evening, we had two candidates who had received two votes apiece. And I've asked them to come back for consideration this evening. It was Oscar Mitchell and Samantha, I don't remember her last name.
Pisick.
And I think Oscar's here, Samantha here?
I don't hear.
Okay, and I think we had tried to reach out to her and she did not respond.
Mayor, I'd like to reopen the discussion that we had about the number of council members that serve on that board.
Okay.
I think that with the two of us on there, we have a strong enough representation from council. I think having two outstanding applicants like Samantha, who now, in addition to her experience on the legislative budget, Ford has now a year of experience on PCDC. And having Oscar, who's been engaged with our city on multiple levels for many years, and has a great understanding of how things are evolving here. And I think would be a quick study for PCDC. I think those two representatives from the community would serve our needs very well on the board.
Okay, any other comments and concerns? Well, I would say.
Oh, I'm still interested, yeah. And I certainly get what you said, what you're saying. I hear you, and I certainly understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, I'd like to reiterate what I said last time. That I think that we're at a certain point where I think PCDC needs a little bit more oversight from council. For lack of a better word. I know I worded it better last time, but we're at a point where we need to make some serious decisions about the future of PCDC. And I don't think Samantha got a whole lot of votes last time. She got one vote last time.
She got two.
She got two.
She got two?
Same as Oscar.
Okay, I thought it was one. Alright, I thought Oscar had three. I'm not sure, I'm sorry, so.
No, Oscar had two.
I was wondering if Mr. McDonald would be able to explain his pushback.
So, there's a couple of things. Thank you. There's a couple of things. One, we create boards and commissions to allow for the collection of citizen input. For the ability for others besides us to expand our circles, right, and our level of awareness, to bring in additional experiences. To council member Ruiz's point, we are the final arbiter of anything PCDC does every time. Sitting on the board doesn't change that. And so I would say in a legal term, your argument is moot, because you already have that power over PCDC. My concern is that having one council member there allows for communication from that board to this board in terms of having sit there and participate in discussions. Having two gives us a little better coverage in case one of us is ill or traveling. And I'm very comfortable with that, and I think that still puts us in a minority in terms of voting for things when there's a seven-member board. Putting, if we put three on there, I think now we're tipping the scales too much, and it's going to be less citizen-controlled. And in fact, we had a couple of board members that didn't want to return because they were concerned about whether or not they were just rubber stamping whatever council said. If the point, Caesar, if your point is to take over that board and control it, then we need to put the maximum number of seats on there and just be blatant about it and be honest about it and say we're going to take four seats. And control it, if that's your point.
No, no, I don't see where that's coming from, actually.
You said, I think you used the word control, maybe I'm.
Oversight.
Oversight, oh, that's, yeah.
Explore.
That's the role we already have. Explore. If I may, to Mr. McDonald's point, and this may sound a little awkward coming from me, because I was the third person on there for a few months. But when I became the third council member on that board, I was very clear. I was only doing it temporarily. I was only doing it for continuity. I have seven years' experience on that board as a citizen and three years' experience as a council member. And I did get to see firsthand, when we had fewer votes on council, we had two city council members over there. And it was very clear that if the council wanted something done, you know, those two members only had to go get one more, and it was done. I think putting three members on council, it removes some of the oversight that we as council members have of that board.
Interesting.
By putting it in the hands of a minority of the council members and then allowing them essentially control over the decisions happening over there. So I would certainly agree with Mr. McDonald that fewer over there is better. Honestly, I would be happy with one or even none in the future. I think it's important that that board operates independently and we exercise our oversight authority. But I think loading it up with too many council members is, jeopardizes the intent of that organization.
Thank you for that. My other question is, Mr. McDonald, you mentioned Sarah. However, it sounds like they've tried to contact her and reach her, so are you suggesting that she still be a part of the vote, even though she's not here and hasn't expressed interest to continue?
Samantha?
Samantha, my apologies.
Absolutely. She, I believe she attended every meeting. With the exception of the one or two when she delivered a baby. And so I don't think anybody here would hold that against her attendance record.
Is she still interested? Is she still interested?
Yes.
Did you speak to her?
I haven't spoken with her today. I intended to give her another call, but the last time I spoke with her, she expressed her continuing, continued interest in serving on the board.
And, I mean, not to muddy the water here, but I mean, I think we tried to exercise as much communication with her to have her be present here through email and phone calls and so forth. And she failed to respond back to our city secretary, so that sends me a message that maybe she's not interested. And for whatever reason that may be. I have some concerns over appointments that we've made in the past, and I hope that we can address that in the future. I think that both, we've had a couple of appointments that were on the fly simply because they were volunteering, and we didn't have anybody else to pick from, and I think that's a mistake. I think one year on PCDC, and again, I don't, you know, have not, I sat right next to Samantha a few times. Of course, she was pregnant, was out for a while. I'm not sure that her, and again, maybe she was influential, having experienced with the legislative, what is it?
Budget Board.
Budget Board. I really doubt it. I don't think that played any, had any impact on her impressions on the PCDC. I wish there were some other things I could say that would have made some impressions, but anyway, that's just my thought on that.
I appreciate your feedback, Mayor. My comment there is that I know that when I was first elected, some of the, to this day, some of the best advice I got was, be quiet your first year and listen. And, you know, understand what's going on and understand the things that you're voting on. I think that she was in that learning role, from my perspective and my understanding, and having talked with her about things. But that's just my perspective.
And, you know, I'll say, I'm very concerned with PCDC. I'm very concerned when we appoint people that don't have the personality to express themselves the way they need to. I'm very concerned when we put people on PCDC who do rubber stamp. Because we have a wonderful CEO there, I think that's her role.
Executive Director.
Executive Director, there we go. I knew it was executive something, but I could, we have a wonderful executive director, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to find my words correctly so that I don't offend people. We have a wonderful executive director, but when we put some people on there, they're very impressionable upon that, by that executive director, and they tend to rubber stamp. And I think that we're at a point where we, we don't need to put up with that anymore here on council.
But you understand what you're saying is that you're going to be on PCDC and make a vote, and then you're going to come back to council and make the same vote. You're rubber stamping yourself, right?
You're doing it.
And again, I said that I think one or two is sufficient, but once you start taking more of that, you're swinging that.
And that's why I would only want to serve on place four, to fill Doug's one for one year. I'm not looking to do this forever and a day. I mean, you've been on there for what, for quite some time? Doug was on there for quite some time. Others have been on there for quite some time. I think that needs to be shared among city council. I'm not looking for it to be there for, to be Doug's record. I think you've been. So you don't want, you don't want Doug's monument? Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not looking for PCDC to name the building after me or anything like that. I'm looking to try to get on there for one year and hope that we could, at the best, steer it in the right direction. I remember specifically you saying last time that that was your thought process, was that you wanted to be on there for a year, see how things are going. If I recall correctly, this iteration, is that what you put, I think, well, I don't know if it's iteration, but this, the current configuration, how about that, of it, if it's working, and if so, okay, you're good. If not, then we need to look at other aspects to it. I do, I do appreciate having a John DeSai and things. I do think that they've done, I mean, like I brought up the whole water park. I mean, that's a deal. I mean, that's, you know, the things that we, we were looking at like. Yeah, and, you know, I think sometimes those things aren't necessarily, the whole story's told how it goes with that. But I also can appreciate, what I do, same thing I appreciate you run council, is that you will give an honest, frank assessment on things right there as well. I also think this, it's very different seeing the sausage on your plate as opposed to seeing the sausage made. And I think that you will have a very good perspective on PCDC being on PCDC, which I think is the only, could help you.
Mr. Mayor, will you entertain a motion?
Are you calling the call to question?
There is. Make a motion. You can call a question or not. Mr. Mayor, I would move that Caesar Ruiz be appointed to place four, and Oscar Mitchell be appointed to place seven.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
You should have just done a call to question.
That is pretty.
Oh.
That's pretty.
That's nice.
Like your graphics.
There you go. And I'll add, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Weiss, I really do respect your opinion, and I know it's not coming from Alice.
Motion carried.
I really do.
Alright, we're done.
Are we done for that?
Thank you. Well, no, 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 congratulations. We're done with that item. Thank you, Oscar, for being present. Appreciate you coming in. Alright, item five B, discuss and consider action regarding the engagement, engaging construction law firm for as-needed construction legal services. Mr. Rogers? Mr. Mayor, will you entertain a motion? Yes. I move that we engage Allensworth as our primary construction law firm for as-needed construction legal services, and that we engage Colonialist Law as an alternate for those occasions when Allensworth is conflicted out or when they're, they feel that their expertise is not up to the, that they feel that Colonialist Law would be a better fit for service for us.
I will second so we can discuss.
Discuss. Why that order? Have a motion and a second. I felt like I was more comfortable with Allensworth's approach to litigation. That they, I think they both have a lot to recommend them. But I know that that has been the area that we have been struggling with for the last couple of years. And I feel like I really want a firm there that I think the council can be comfortable with. I think, frankly, I think that they're highly competent either group. I don't think that we would be ill-served by either one of them. Allensworth just seemed to me to have a better grasp of the, of the litigation process, and maybe I'm wrong. Always, always a possibility, but that was just the impression that I got from the presentations that were made.
Mayor, is it okay if I call the attorneys up?
Sure.
Attorneys.
Counsel if you'll approach. The whole room comes over. No, just us two, just us two.
Where would you like the rest of the day?
Do we stand together?
We've got gloves. We'll bring staff, bring the gloves out.
It's like game, bop up, red and blue. One question that, Rock'em, sock'em, thank you. That's why I'm telling you.
What I'm here for.
Yeah, one of the questions that I failed to ask that I wanted to bring up was the fact that we talked about Central Docket, and we also talked about, you know, the idiosyncrasies of various judges. Judge Mangram in particular is a construction law expert, and I just wanted to hear your experience practicing in front of her. And, you know, you know, you know, either through motion practice, hearings, trials, just get a little snippet about that.
So I think our firm has appeared before her frequently. As often as we get her on the rotating docket, we go in front of her. I think she's a good and experienced construction litigator. I practiced law with her as opposing counsel on one of the cases before she took the bench. I know our firm routinely sponsors her contributions, but I think she's fair and reasonable. And I think she does a good job of construction and understanding the nuances of construction litigation.
I've only had one hearing since she took out the bench in front of Judge Mangram. I know her a lot from practicing with her. She was an insurance defense lawyer for architects and engineers. That's a very large part of my personal practice when I was a young lawyer. And so I've had a dozen cases where we were co-defendants. She's easy to work with. We were all thrilled to get a construction lawyer on the Travis County District. Everybody in the construction bar was thrilled to have her, so. We've got a great relationship with Judge Mangram. We know that we don't have to repeat construction issues in front of her when we get a hearing. Obviously, on a central docket, we don't pick, but if we have something going and we find out, when we get down to the courthouse, that Judge Mangram is hearing it, simplifies the hearing. We're going to be able to get to the issues, and she understands the construction stuff. That's, that's one of the judges you want on any, any matter, any matter in front of Travis County District Court.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, yeah, thank you. I'd have a motion and a second on the floor.
Alright, let's do it. Can't wait to press no to these attorneys.
Motion carried.
Oh, you didn't like the order.
Counsel, we'll bring back two engagements for the next council meeting for your approval.
Alright, thank you very much. Moving on to the items that were pulled, four F and four G. Trista, if you would read that.
Yes, item four F is approving a construction contract with SKE Construction in the amount of $2,145,818 for the Flugerville Estates Waterline Rehabilitation Project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
I pulled this one. I had some questions to staff earlier. They were able to answer my questions, but it led me to what I believe is a policy or a larger issue. This particular item is, you know, over $2 million to rehabilitate water lines to an area that is outside city limits. And it's about 200 homes. You can do the math on that. That's pretty substantial. One of my questions was, hey, can we, can we allocate a fee based on this to those who are actually benefiting from it? Especially seeing as it's outside city limits. It's a very targeted area. I understand there were some concerns with PUC challenges and rate setting. But I believe what was conveyed to me was that in certain scenarios, when there is a specific, what do I want to say, a directed benefit, that it would or should be available to charge some sort of recoup fee, and that's what I would like to see on this. That's, that's why I'm concerned about this particular expenditure for benefiting such a small group of homes and the rest of our rate payers subsidizing it, as we have heard from others about our increasing water rates, that I don't think it's appropriate for us to subsidize this one out-of-city-limits area for the rehabilitation project.
So are you asking to pull this while we look at the possibility of some sort of recoup fee?
That would, unless there's some other way for us to pursue that while still moving forward, but I think it would be appropriate for us to hit pause and see what we can do.
Is there an urgency for this? Who's, who's this project? Is this?
Oh, it's bonded.
Can we punt for two weeks?
I need a methodeum. Just that question, what would happen in two weeks?
Two, two weeks isn't a concern.
Uh, two, two weeks isn't a concern, uh, but just to be clear, the neighborhood itself doesn't have adequate fire protection for fire hydrants in the area. So that's, that's a, it's a pretty big.
Expand, expand on that.
There's uh, so if you look at the Flue real estate neighborhood, there's a, on the presentation, there's like the map of it. Uh, so we're talking one fire hydrant in an entire block. So when you're normal, there's normal spacing for uh, for fire hydrants that's required by both fire code and by AWA standards. Um, so two weeks, no big deal. No, not a big deal at all. We're happy to bring this back again uh, in two weeks or in the, the next meeting. Um, but yeah, when we're looking at these streets that you see here, uh, very frequently, especially the ones on the north side, we're, we're not meeting fire code and a- or adequate fire code to be able to if there was a structural fire with any of the residents in that area.
So many years ago when I was on the um, ESD board and we looked at the colored edition, um, I was pretty shocked to see how dismal Dublincy, um, it was regarding the actual standards regarding the lack of availability of water lines and water lanes that if, I mean, if a fire ever broke out there, it's done. Like, I mean, it's, it's, it's that equated, it's that um, I don't want to use the word I want to use on it. It's very disappointing that it was built that way. And, and again, we want all parts of our city to reflect um, the prosperity that our city and our citizens have enjoyed in general with that. With that said, um, with what Doug was speaking about, is there another way? Because you're right. I mean, it's gotta, we've got to do something because this is just a, you know, a, an issue waiting to happen. Is there another way that you can perceive of us to be able to make sure this is, issue's addressed without having to actually go ahead and have this on, on us and the entire system and people participating in it?
So.
Or is that just the normal practice and procedures?
And so we can, we're, we're more than happy to evaluate whether we can do that without putting us at the ire of PUC or having a rate case in front of PUC. Um, whether that's through a targeted fee, targeted fee, I believe, um, we're, we're happy to look at that through our annual, because we evaluate rates every year uh, to make sure that we're either on par with where we're at or where we're at compared to where we should be. So we're happy to evaluate that with that rate setting piece and make sure that we're not gonna put ourselves squarely in the crosshairs of, of PUC, uh, because I uh, we, we, we don't prefer not to go in front of PUC if we can help it, uh, because it's a long laborious process that involves a lot of attorney's fees, but we're more than happy to, to include this in our, our rate evaluation when we do that.
Help me understand, is that in the Flugerville ETJ or Austin ETJ?
Uh, it's in Flugerville ETJ, right on the southern edge. So uh, you see Desol Road right there on the, just south of Wells Branch. So it's City of Flugerville ETJ. Uh, but it's our water CCN. So uh, the, the CCN lines don't follow city limits, city limit lines.
And, and you know, and the problem is that area to that point, Jim, you know, I get, you know, we oftentimes talk about why I feel like we should be more bullish about helping out supporting annexation. It's because the areas like this, they fall in, they fall literally in the middle of the Bermuda Triangle. Like, they get no love. Also, the issues happen in these specific areas right there as well, because Austin does not care about what goes on over there, but they consider themselves Flugerville citizens in their area. So if we can find a way to help support and help that area? Absolutely. But I think to, you know, again, what um, Doug was saying, Mayor, pretend on that. Can we get more creative? And if it's not, if you're just gonna tell us, hey, you're the SME here. If you're just telling us, this is just the way we do business, this is how we handle things regarding these issues right there. That's one thing, but if we can be more creative about it, particularly since we're all quite aware of the water rates and what our citizens are dealing with right now with that.
And to, to the same point, uh, yes, we could, we can evaluate it, but we can do, we have two rehabilitation projects in the following two years for both Gatlinburg and Bowles, um, the neighborhoods there to where we, we would, we could have the same conversation as well, but they're just inside the city limits, but they're a water system.
I think the difference with Gatlinburg and Bowles is those are areas within the city limits, right?
Correct.
Uh, I think, I think Doug's point is that, yes, we, we, we understand it's our responsibility, it's within our CCN. Um, but there, there's no, there's no revenue coming uh, from, from this neighborhood other than the, the utility fee. Um, and, and I think the, the, the longstanding um, uh, standard is that single family doesn't, doesn't support itself, right? There, there's not enough ad valorem value to, to pay for the streets, to pay for the water, to pay for the up, upkeep and maintenance. And so, and so the, uh, the point there, I think uh, Doug, and, and if I'm, if I'm mischaracterizing your query, let me know, but I, I think it's a question of equity for the citizens of the city that do pay ad valorem property taxes.
Yeah, if I, if I amortize this expense even over thirty years, it's still a, a fifty dollars a month per house out there that, you know, we're subsidizing essentially. I am curious, uh, is there, you, you mentioned other rehabilitation projects. Are there others to this degree? You said Gatlinburg and Bowles, uh, are, are, is there anywhere else where we have inadequate fire flow?
Not to this type of work, so I'll use Bowles as an example, because it's an easy one. Uh, so they have asbestos cement pipe, uh, which if you ever uh, have seen a commercial about asbestos, it's obviously not great. So when we have to repair it, uh, we have to, it's a whole Tyvek suit, so um, it's the same age as these. Uh, we're planning to go through that next year and start doing what's called pipe bursting. Uh, but that's gonna be significantly more expensive than what this is if you look at it a per, per, per house, because you're looking at expanding the pipe, blowing all the way through. There's a, there's a significant expense there as well. Uh, that's a lot more expensive than what we're doing here.
Yeah, I think Thomas wants to share some thoughts.
Hey, I just wanted to add one more piece. So um, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So this project was included in our, in our existing rate model. And so I think that the comment that needs to be thrown out there is it's something that's very easy for us to look at moving forward relative to not getting into a PUC situation where this could be challenged and, and some of those, um, some more legal issues. But for this particular improvement, it was already included in our CIP. It was included in how our rates were constructed.
That's fair.
So to hold this one, um,
That's fair.
could, could be challenging, um, but, but kind of moving forward on a bigger, broader policy conversation, I, I think that's certainly something that we should.
And, and I think that answers my question, because I was gonna ask. Are we just crossing this hurdle now? Why wasn't this brought up before and before we got to contracting with you know, individuals and so forth? So, um, if you understood it was in the CIP and we approved the CIP, then I get.
And Rogers didn't approve it, all of us.
Oh, okay.
All of these lines uh, put in place in the early nineteen ninety, nineteen eighties, according to this, using non-standard material and sizes. Is that just because it was out in the county and nobody had supervisory authority over it? That city didn't dictate anything because they were outside the city limits, even though they were inside our CCN, we weren't able to, to set standards on that?
That's generally, I mean, I wasn't there at the time, but generally that's what you, what's what you find.
He was playing with his team and toys like me back then.
It was more, but when you see older systems like that, whether us or other surrounding cities, usually when those come into the city or into the CCN, you'll find older materials because there was never really any oversight of it.
So in, in, in the future, uh, areas that are outside the city that are inside our CCN, are we gonna be able to, to control these kinds of issues?
Sure. So when we do a development agreement, let's just use a development agreement, for example, uh, we can stipulate as a, as a contingency of providing wholesale water, wastewater, whatever we're providing, uh, if we're not gonna be providing the retail side of it, that they conform to the city's standard details and standard specifications as a requirement of receiving service from the city, which is quite normal.
As we build out towards nine seventy-three, we're gonna avoid these kinds of problems coming up in the future.
And, and typically we, this, this is, this infrastructure is funded through mud or a pit. Uh, we're not typically the ones installing the neighborhood pipes and fire flow.
Uh, for the ones towards, that's the example of nine seventy-three, those are a significant amount of muds out there, yes, sir.
Could, could you tell me from a, I don't know, a, a best practice perspective, uh, a, a consistency perspective, who is typically responsible for installing water lines for fire hydrants in neighborhoods? Does that fall to the city that they're in? Does it fall to the CCN owner? Does it fall to the, the developer who's, who's creating the neighborhood? Where, where does that responsibility typically lie?
Kind of depends.
Yeah, it's like it depends.
So if you're, if it's a new development, so a new development is usually the developer puts in new water, new water lines or wastewater, new fire hydrants, all the, that kind of stuff to conform to city standards, and then it's conveyed to the city with a warranty uh, date on it. Um, so, but if it's something, let's say hypothetically, we're purchasing an area that already has infrastructure in, then we are responsible for that, for whatever is on the, in the ground. If, that makes sense, if we purchase, not the area, but if we purchase the CCN.
And could a, could a project like this typically be used as a, um, an incentive for annexation?
I'm sorry, for what?
For annexation.
Annexation.
I don't know if I'm the most qualified person to answer if we'd qualify for that, because you can be in the CCN and not, um, and not be in the city limits. I mean, whether it, you could be within the CCN and you could still follow like water and wastewater development standards, but annexation is kind of a.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, I like, I like, I like where you're going on this.
I mean, you could write it as a spa.
Yeah, I mean, because, yeah, I mean, and we, we, we have much more creative tools, to your point, to be able to go and help do those things with that.
In districts anyway.
Yeah, because I mean, realistically speaking, let's be honest, that's the problem, like where, where, where my parents live, Windermere. Oh my gosh, the roads that were built there were like, it was like Beirut, and they were just waiting to be annexed into the city, and then all of a sudden they're complaining to who? Us, about their roads. And it's like, hell, we.
We didn't build that.
We didn't build that. What are you, you know, what are you talking about over here? So, you know, it, it's, I'm glad that y'all are holding these developers and these folks towing their line on these things, moving forward on these things, because like I said, like how lucky are they that nothing ever happened there? Because if a fire happened there, they were done.
Yep.
I'm just frustrated. I keep thinking about.
Well, and the people in Sarus Creek are not in a substantially different position. Right? I mean, they're sort of in between us and Austin there, and the Austin ETJ, they think of themselves as being in Flugerville. Um, they're inside our CCN, right? Isn't that correct? Sarus Creek?
I, I was like, yeah, they're not our water. I can't.
They're not our water.
I'm trying to remember the.
Are they, they're Austin, right? Okay. So then Austin has to deal with that problem over there. Alright.
So I, I think it would be appropriate, and I'll, I'll move that we postpone for two weeks or until our next meeting to see if we can come up with an idea of how to uh, uh, provide directed funding.
And I don't think you need to ask. I think, I, I think we can just do that, right?
Yeah.
But let, let me be clear, you're asking if we will fee the individual properties?
Find a way to provide for directed funding for the project from the uh, the individuals who benefit from it.
Just brings back some options, Serena.
I don't know if it's a fee, I don't know if it's a different rate. I, I don't know if it's some sort of district or overlay. See what, see what we can come up with. Uh, my, my policy direction is that the individuals benefiting from the project provide the, the funding for the project.
I feel uncomfortable with that.
It seems like a big ask for two weeks, but I don't know.
It, it's probably.
Well, maybe it's, maybe it's four weeks, maybe it's two months.
Is there a way that we might enter executive session, um, to have that conversation because of legal litigation?
If you have an attorney-client privileged conversation, but if you have policy discussions?
No, no, I, I'd like to give the reason, I, I need to know, um, because there was a city that recently lost on PUC case just like this.
So can we?
I'm not aware, I, I'm not aware of it. I mean, we can, we, my plan, I mean, there is authority out there um, for purposes of prorata reimbursement, um, for the extension of mains and lines. There's some statutory authority out there to do that. I don't know how it would work here with respect to a two million dollar project and however many homes are there. Um, but there's some authority for that. Um, so, I mean, I'm, my plan was to look and help assist looking into those issues for statutory authority and other authority to accomplish what council would like to accomplish. And then if there's, if I run into legal issues, I'll be, I would then be prepared to discuss those, but I'm not aware of any right now until I dig into it.
Well.
But I'm happy to go into closed session if there's, if we'll tell you that I don't know the answer to the question.
I would like to say, even if we came up with something in two weeks, uh, to be able to get those funds reimbursed over time or whatever, I would think we'd have to go back to the residents of that neighborhood, and they may say, go discover yourself, you know?
Yeah, no, that's true. We, we, I mean, and we would have to have, we would have to, we would have to have an ordinance in place that authorizes that pro, so there would, there would be steps that would, would need to be taken, but there is authority, some statutory authority out there for prorata reimbursement of extension mains and lines.
And I think if we recognize that area, I mean, I haven't been out there in a while. I know it's, it's been there a while. But I think we're gonna find that the citizens, the residents of that area will not be able to afford.
Correct.
That, that's, that's my, that's.
That's, you gotta know that area.
Yeah, I was about to say, we, we know that area. We know that population over there with us as well, and um, that causes me a consternation because we know where that is from there as well. Um, I, I, I get your point regarding um, alternatives. I'm willing to hear an alternative. I mean, I didn't think about an overlay, but I think realistically speaking, you know, they're on our CCN. This is an issue that we're well aware of.
It boils down to safety.
Yes, I know, but I'm trying to watch my legal terms to make sure nothing's happened in the future, based on our conversation now. Um, so yeah, that's all I'll say. I'll just leave it at that.
So do we still need executive session or not? I don't.
I mean, I don't know what the legal issue is. I'm happy to go into closed session. I don't.
Know what the legal issue is. Happy to go into closed session and, and have a question asked.
I was just referencing City of Leon.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar with it, so.
Well, if he doesn't know it, then I don't, I can't.
I'm not familiar with what happened with the city.
You might be able to answer the question. Alright, so I need a motion one way or the other, please.
Uh, move to postpone.
Second. Have a motion.
What's two weeks? Okay. What is two weeks going to do?
I don't know that I would put a timeline on it. If we're gonna move to postpone, it would be, it's after our first, we'll just move to postpone, because I don't know if two weeks would be enough time. So I want to put a definitive timeline on it.
Well, plus even if you have two weeks, then you have to go out to residents to, it could be six months.
I, I mean, you can come back in two weeks and tell us we couldn't come up with something, or you could take as long as you need to implement something that you come up with.
Okay, have a motion.
No is a complete sentence as well, so there's always that.
Yes, it is. McDonald.
I'm waiting, I'm thinking.
Alright. It's like motion carried.
Thank you.
Very important decision, man.
Thinking, the thinking and.
So come back in two weeks.
Two weeks.
Whenever. Okay, thank you. And uh, I believe the.
I, I would like, we said two weeks, let's do two weeks, because like I said.
Just tell us something in two weeks. It doesn't have to be a final answer.
And I believe SKE is present, so we'll see you in two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, item four, uh, G?
Item four G is approving the PCDC executive director to integrate contract with TIP Strategies, the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars and authorizing PCDC expenditures not to exceed fifty thousand dollars to match an additional twenty-five thousand dollar grant award from Texas Workforce Commission for purposes of conducting a physical workforce study.
Alright, I, I pulled this one as well. Um, shall I pontificate on it? I think my, my concern with this is uh, uh, maybe better addressed in the said, so I thank you for uh, providing the, the hard copy of that. I know we got it electronically, but I, when I look at this and I understand it is a um, a, a matching grant, uh, is it a two to one or a one to one?
So we'll put in fifty, they'll put in twenty-five.
Okay. Uh, and it's, it's for a workforce study, and my question to staff on this uh, initially was, is this a study where we are looking at the skills and resources of the people who live here and identifying where, you know, looking at our existing workforce and saying, you know, what jobs do we need to get here so they don't have to leave town? Uh, or is this a, a workforce study where we're looking at the, the businesses, uh, the target industry that we, we may want to recruit and trying to identify uh, the, the skills needed to educate people either here or otherwise to fill those, those roles. Uh, and I believe it was the latter, not the former, uh, was the, the answer I received on that. And, and it caused me concern when we were talking earlier about, uh, I, I would say previously about how ninety-two percent of people who live here leave town to go to work. And I'm trying to understand why I would be trying to educate people for jobs that don't necessarily exist here. If those people, everyone who lives here already has a job, not everyone already has a job. Um, but I believe back when we, um, when we recruited, recruited the Amazon facility, we were very excited about uh, about the jobs that was bringing and the people that was bringing to town. Uh, and we do see that the vast majority of the people who work there don't live here. Vast majority of jobs in town are filled by people who uh, don't live here in town. Uh, so I, I felt like this study was kind of counterproductive to what I'm hoping to accomplish uh, from a, a PCDC perspective. I, I'm, I'm feeling that we're, we're not necessarily focusing on the, the workforce that we have, but focusing on a workforce that uh, to, to be a little, um, uh, what is it? Uh, not, not necessarily politically correct. A workforce we don't necessarily need. We've got a great workforce here. Um, so I'm trying to understand, yes, it's, it's matching. We've got a great workforce here, um, so I'm trying to understand, yes, it's, it's matching funds, it's a, a one-to-two matching funds, we're putting in fifty thousand dollars for a study. But I don't understand what we're gonna end up with, with this study to, we're, we're gonna go out and we're gonna create a workforce training program. For jobs we don't have for people who aren't here.
So I haven't heard a narrative that long from Doug in a long time, so I am fascinated, yeah, I, I am, I am fascinated to hear.
Yeah.
What are you trying to do here?
So, this is Tom Stumm, and he, he's with TIP Strategies, but I will say, Doug, actually, it is a study that's gonna cover not only workforce, but also the industries that are currently here. It's gonna focus on what the industry needs, the, the, industries need, and we haven't had a specific workforce study in Flugerville that's this focused and this comprehensive. I would ask Tom to please give a, give a little bit more information about it.
Sure, sure, um, great question, and I apologize if our answer that we sent back wasn't as clear as it needed to be. But, uh, I mean, there's, the workforce that is here, uh, the residents that are here that have jobs, not all of them are working here, they're working all over Austin, and so the greater area.
Which is not atypical, same thing for Georgetown, thank you for Round Rock, for Leon.
Yeah, yeah, any sort of peripheral cities, and so anytime you look at, you know, what is it that we're trying to do here, you know, we're trying to become Flugerville more competitive.
I'd say contiguous city as opposed to peripheral, but keep going.
All right, all right, uh, we need a discussion about suburban, exurban definitions more. Um, but, uh, the, uh, the competitiveness of Flugerville, when companies are considering the greater Austin area. You know, one of the things that you want to be able to present is that we have the workforce, and we've made that commitment, and we also have the training to support those industries that you're talking to. You wanna, you wanna be competitive in this area, but we all know that it's not just employees from Flugerville that will work for a company that comes in, it'll be, you know, a larger area, so we'll look at the larger area. But to your point, which is, we, we have a lot of skilled, folks with skills that live here, some of them work here and some of them don't. And if we're gonna attract a new industry, we wanna make sure that they have an opportunity or kind of first shot at it, so they don't have to commute somewhere else. And so we will look at that, and it'll be kind of a two different, um, audiences for that. And so we will look at, you know, where are the opportunities for the existing employees to kind of increase their wages and wealth that are residents here to align with, you know, the, the companies that would be moving in. So, have I confused you more, or is that?
I, I, I believe I understood, uh, it just, it, it doesn't feel like the right answer to me.
Go on.
If I'm trying to recruit companies here, i- is it for the workforce I already have, uh, in which case it's irrelevant. Uh, if I'm recruiting companies here for a workforce that, that doesn't exist yet, then I need to make sure that I'm retraining the people who are here. Uh, and frankly, I don't see the, um, the capacity needs, the, the employment numbers that say the people here need retooling. Um, the people here have great skills, uh, and I don't think it's the people here who we're going to be retraining with a, with a program like that.
So one of the things that's interesting, and I, I, I'm glad you framed it that way. This is an issue, and this is why, I know words matter, that's why when you said periphery, I mean, periphery means something that's not necessary, and that's as well, that's why I said contiguous.
Yes.
Um, I, you know, when we're looking at the skill sets necessary for the jobs that are coming up, I, I, I keep using this quote over and over, and it's true. Is that you have thirty percent of the workforce that has the skill set necessary for ninety percent of the jobs that are coming in the future. So this isn't just a Flugerville issue, it's a holistic issue for Central Texas, it's the reason why, and I don't remember where I was, but it feels like deja vu, I'm having this conversation again. Um, you're having a lot of these companies going ahead and training people in India, across the world, and other places around the world, and they're bringing them here. Because they're like, oh crap, coming to Central Texas, and these, these folks don't, I, I need, I need to fix what I'm doing here. The reason why Tesla went back out to California, Southern California, and they're, you know, and they're, and they're opened up that plant out there, because they were like, wait, we don't have the folks with the skill sets here. So there's a retraining that needs to happen for the, for these jobs around the future. Now, I don't know if this is the right vehicle to do that, I mean, that's a great question, what you're asking, like, I don't, I don't know if this is the right vehicle to go.
Are we taking a strategic approach for, to do what you're saying, because what, what needs to happen and, and what we're gonna research and get a study on, I, I don't feel that there can grow it.
Yeah, so what's your answer to that, because that's, that's a fair point.
So one of the reasons TIP Strategies kind of rose to the top with us is because it's not just a study that sits on the shelf. They actually will have measurable tasks that we will follow to align with what the strategic plan is going to come out with. So it's not just something to tell us, oh, we have the demographics of so many percent go out of the city to work and some stay here. It's really gonna inform on those four target industries that are outlined in your SEDs, and as you said, when you go through that, you'll, you'll see a little bit more information.
Crystal, can you say those industries, please?
Yeah, so the industries in the SEDs, um, that are, are advanced technology, manufacturing, life sciences, which is some of that wet lab we were talking about. Software and information technology, and you'll see a little bit more about those industries in there. And because we partnered TIP with EY, they really are working hand-in-hand to ensure that this is a work study that we can take, move forward, and have actionable items from.
So is that based on the SEDs that, that hasn't been reviewed or approved by council yet?
So it's based on, um, the draft that was reviewed by the, right, and it's coming to you guys, it is based on the draft, that's reviewed, and they're working hand-in-hand. This work will not start until the SED is completed and approved by the board, just like they can't start until it's approved by you guys.
So the hard part is, Crystal, now that you fell into his trap, um, is that.
Well, it sounds like we've got a, a cart before the horse.
Yeah, that's the problem, that's the problem, right? Because what if we come back and say, oh, we like everything but the way you're approaching that?
Sure.
Because I would, I would, I, my impression would be with something like this, is that you need, you need, you need a willing partner with a viable up-and-coming workforce, which would be the school district.
Yes.
And would be, what is the trainer, now that we've changed what the model is for, um, community colleges in the state of Texas, ACC set the model, ACC, like, something like that. You would need to do that in conjunction with Texas Workforce Commission to, or, let's say, um, Workforce Solutions, since we're talking local.
Or four-year university.
Yeah, yeah, or four, yeah, for these things, so.
And Workforce Solutions informed on this, just so you know.
I'm so sorry.
And Workfor, I'm sorry, Workforce Solutions did inform on this, um, RFP as well.
Okay, so Tamara, Tamara looked at this.
Yes, yes, sir, yes.
So, to, to, but again, back to Doug's point, is that what we just discussed? Are those entities going to be discussed and worked with and find a viable solution, some sort of, you said measurable goals and steps moving forward on there? So there, there, have they already been contemplated in this, those entities?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, they're part of the solution, and since TWC and Workforce Solutions is part of the funding mechanism, and we have worked for them, we did the Capital Area Workforce Master Plan. Um, and we have, we, we know what ACC is doing.
What about the school district?
Flugerville ISD?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And you, we mentioned ACC, what about University of Texas, Houston-Tiltson, and San Edwards?
Yeah, and depending on their contributions, which, you know, depending on their programs and their aptitude for, for supporting that, as well as, you know, TSTC and PTO and, you know, there are other groups that can come to bear. But, you know, the focus really is on Flugerville and making Flugerville more competitive.
I'm so sorry, my apologies, the, the reason why I, I mentioned those entities was in relation to Flugerville, because obviously, to Doug's point, those are other entities that are doing the training, the job skill, skill sets. Which will impact the workforce here in Flugerville, that's why I was confused as that. Um, it's, let me tell, here's a hint, yes, I already know what this is gonna look like, I already know what this is gonna say, yes, we need them to have the skill sets and everything else from there. So which goes back to my point, do we need to spend seventy-five thousand dollars to tell us something that we already, we already know? Um, how will this, but this is where staff gets us sometimes, and I, and as an attorney, why we advise clients sometimes of things. There are steps necessary to be able to get funding mechanisms, to get approvals, to work on things right there. Where does this fall in our ability that necessitates for this to occur, to be able to actually get to our long-term goal to make sure our, the folks here do have the skill sets from there? Why is this necessary?
Yeah, the implementation, you know, beyond the step, so it's, it's, like, like you said, we know many of the things and will confirm them. But there may be some things that pop up as a result of talking directly with the HR directors or talking with UT or the others that are out there. We'll also look at, you know, what, what are other communities that are facing similar challenges in other places that we work? How are they addressing this and what are they doing about it? And so the, what they're doing about it is the area that we want to get to. You know, the, the rest, like you said, you know, the analysis, there may be things that you already know, that you'll just say, yeah, yeah, we kind of knew that, but we'll document it. You know, it'll come from, you know, the employers about what their challenges are in the districts.
So it doesn't sound like this is necessary for some government grants or some opportunities that we ha- and, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so tell me if I'm wrong here.
No.
Um, for, for so, for pre-approval for something that we need to go ahead and get executed on. Um, instead, this is an opportunity for us to, um, have a benchmark, get alternative solutions from folks in and around us or analogous to us and where we're heading. And then use that moving forward. So, again, I mean, you fell into this trap, so I'm just going over here. Do we need to do this to do that? Like, is there any other way, that's what, I mean, because if we know the answer is yes, we need to get big people who are better skilled sets, we just do. That needs to happen, that's not just here in Flugerville, it's across Central Texas, across this country, we know that's a, we know that's a thing. We know that people are, are finding ways to find solutions for that, ACC, other things right there, Arkansas has done a really good job, redevelopment of running different areas, been very impressive about some left-leaning cities and across Arkansas. Um, why does this need to happen as opposed to, hey, let's go talk to people that have already, you know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, they've already made the wheel?
Well, I, you can expand as well, but, yes, we may have some anecdotal evidence, we may have some things that are regional, but to have a true focus on Flugerville's not been done. And also, we need to know what are the other ones doing, you know, we're one person, and to have a consultant who is an expert in this field to tell us, these are the things that are happening in the region. This is what the evidence really shows us, not what we're anecdotally saying from having talked to businesses, but what they can, um, gather. And then, these are the measures other communities are taking, this is the recommendations for your steps moving forward, and this is how you get there.
So to, I, I know, I, I, we had this discussion at PCDC and, and, um, seemed like this came up, I don't know if I brought it up or it came up. On the, um, uh, Flugerville Independent School District and their CTE Career Center that they're working on and so forth. Have they not done a workforce study?
Um, not in this, they also partner with Workforce Solutions, but Flugerville is, uh, our four B corp is the only one that can go after this type of funding in the region because of the way we're set up.
Well, no, I'm not talking about the funding, I'm talking about have they done a study?
Not, and then a lot of times they'll come to us looking for the information as well, because we, we're in the workforce, so not that I know of, there's not this sort of study, and I work very closely with Tracy.
I don't think they're counting on this workforce study to move forward with their CTE center.
They're, they're aware of it, but right. Oh, no, they're, they're on the road of it, but I don't know their process.
They've gotta know what they're investing millions in with some knowledge.
Sure. Sure, yeah, and they're focusing on the high schoolers and we're focusing on the totality of our labor force.
Well, but it's still generic in a sense that it doesn't matter whether you're a high school graduate or whether you're forty or fifty, sixty-year-old, there's still like workforce need out there that can be met by everybody.
Absolutely, and we hope to share this as well with our partners once it's completed.
And, and you said that the school district, I'm not gonna put words in your mouth, I'm not gonna say you said rely on, but they oftentimes contribute for.
Sure.
This kind of demographic material?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And they pay?
Oh, no, we, we, we are partners, so we'll share with them, hey, this is what we're hearing.
Well, you have a board member now who may be able to help out to make sure they start paying for this.
Oh, oh, awesome.
So.
Would you, would you add anything to that?
So here's, here's my, my continuing concern, and I think I articulated this somewhat at the PCDC meeting.
Oh, so this was the discussion at PCDC?
Yeah.
We, we talked about this, uh, previously.
And, and, and my concern here is, is similar to Doug's in that, um. If, if we are looking at the businesses that are already here and, and trying to figure out. How do we rechan, retrain a, a Dell marketing executive to work there, it's, it's, it's not gonna work, right? It's not gonna happen. Um, if, if we know that X percentage of, of the people that live in Flugerville work outside of Flugerville. Are we finding out what those jobs are that they're working for and then try to find businesses that have those jobs? Are we looking at a, at, at a national and an international scale and saying, oh, the new up-and-coming thing that everybody's talking about is AI? And there is a dearth of developers that know the programming languages Mojo or Go or, or any of the other developing AI, uh, uh, learning models? And so, yeah, are, are we going to find out that, oh, we don't have any facilities for that, and that could be the, the next best thing, and that's what we need to focus on? Are we gonna look at, I mean, there's, there's so many things, right? It is, it is a, it is a complex question. And so, Tom, are we looking at the full breadth of opportunity? Or, or do we have some sort of constraint, you know, in a more narrow focus that's gonna prevent us from understanding this? Because, again, anecdotal or not, we know we need a four-year, uh, university presence here, right? We, we, we know we need something that, that is gonna be scalable and offer the depth of resources that, that we can't do, building a little singular building. With a, with a five-hundred-square-foot or however big, five-thousand-square-foot training center in. We, we need something more than that in this town, that's so, so how would you address that rant?
My apologies.
I said narrative, I did not say rant, counselor. I love the level of self-awareness.
No, and I, I do know that, you know, the AI, for, for example, you know, a lot of in, industries are struggling with it across the board right now. What, it, it's in a sort of stage right now where we're all trying to figure it out, you know? I mean, so that, what it's gonna do to every industry, whether it's real estate or printing, or, you know, you kind of come across it, what it's gonna do. I mean, I think we do a pretty good job of looking out, you know, one, two, five years, and, you know, bringing those trends in and understanding what that's gonna be. And so the, sort of the digitization or digital skills right now are cutting across everything, and that does include AI, and includes a number of other sort of skill sets that are associated with that. And so we will look at that, and, um, the question of, you know, what's been approved or not approved in the current draft of the comprehensive plan. You know, we, we will, we will take a comprehensive approach, and so if we do see things that are, you know, you're better suited for or represented opportunity for the greater Austin area, and if you can get out ahead of it. You know, you might be able to have a competitive advantage with what you offer here, so we will do that, and we, that's, that's part of our process. But, you know, if we follow the letter of just the industries that were identified, we probably cover ninety percent of what's gonna be out there. IT and software covers quite a bit, advanced manufacturing, um, and innovation, you know, that covers quite a bit, healthcare, life science, that covers quite a bit. But there might be something that's not in there right now that we can bring to the table.
Just some friendly advice, given this.
Let me, let me, let me go on a little bit more before you go for the friendly advice. So my concern, right, is, is hearing, and, and maybe, maybe it's a connotation of Workforce Training Center. I think of, you know, uh, additive machine operators, I think of, uh, um, uh, skilled sort of positions, right? Where you're training for, for a skill. But, but I, I can guarantee you that if, if we opened up a, uh, an educational center and had a, had a class of a hundred students, and in six months they all came out and could program and, and, and go. That we would have one-hundred percent employment, and, and they wouldn't have to necessarily fly to California to get those jobs. They could be working from home and bringing that money into the community, uh, uh, through, through these remote working opportunities. And so, I, I already know this, right? Uh, you know it, right, you're just not getting paid to tell us, and so, uh, and so I don't blame you, uh, but, uh, to Doug's point, do we need this? Now give him some friendly advice on how to answer.
All right, I mean, because you didn't really ask him a question.
Do we need this?
Elrhetorical and all sorts of work, do we need this?
It's for the die, I guess.
I, just, okay, with this audience, and I'm sure you've done your homework, but I want to reiterate this, because I don't want you to be disappointed when you come back here and you give an answer that you're gonna have us all shaking our heads on. Um, we know manufacturing is something that you're gonna bring back, we know that, okay? However, what I would challenge you is to see how we pivot from such a heavy onus, responsibility, um, mechanism. Portion of our market manufacturing to something that, you know, that, you know, Jim just brought up, something that Doug's talking about, like, we. Something that Doug's talking about, like we are aware of the skill sets and ideas. Something that David was nodding about, recording, we were talking about the jobs that, you know, California and these other people are coming in for these things. That's what we really need because we know that. Like, you're going to tell us, we have this portion amount of manufacturing in the entire Central Texas region and it benefits our city well. We know that, which is great. And it helps offset a lot of tax issues and everything else from there. What we want to do is we want to get, again, this is SEDs three point O, four point O, five point O. Yeah. How do we pivot to, for what's going to happen in the next ten to twenty years on this? Like, how do we make that happen? We know that it doesn't just happen, we have to have a plan and build a seat on that. But that's the thing that I would be very interested in hearing about that. Because we know you're going to, I mean, we don't, we get it. Manufacturing is king, we get that. But we want people with, you know, what is, what was the, what did that lady say? White collar skills?
White collar work.
You know, you know, what are, what are we doing with the different ma- and, um, job sets? They're going to happen because of what's happened with generative AI and it's all the iterations are working for it. We know you can't, you don't have a crystal ball at everything, but this is what you do for a living. So how do you help a city pivot to the next generation of jobs?
Yeah, and I think you, you guys did well in the SEDs process because that is identified, you know, the IT and the software is the category in which that pivot is occurring. Because you have, you have some employment in that area and then you have individuals who live here who are working for Apple or, you know, some of the other research centers that are happening here. And so the question is, do you want to attract the actual companies here? And that, how do you pivot that way? And so by taking the lead on being the group that has the training and has the institution that's supporting that, that can give you a competitive advantage. Doesn't guarantee that a company's going to come here or if a company does come here, that they're going to hire all Flugerville residents. You know, because as a contiguous community, you know, in the greater Austin area, that, you know, you, you can't guarantee. And so you're really, you're looking for what can be sticky, you know, what can be sticky here. And that, the transition that we're all struggling with in economic development is as, as remote workers come in, if they happen to live in one of the, you know, residences that doesn't meet your cost of services and therefore, and, and it's shopping here maybe or shopping somewhere else, you know, what, what impact have you had as an economic development strategy in increasing your tax base?
How do you capture that?
Yeah, how, how do you capture that? So these are, you know, these are issues that communities are struggling with everywhere right now. We do know that those who have put in place the workforce strategies and have a plan for that and kind of are, are making progress on it and bringing up the issues, being realistic about it, do have a competitive advantage. I work with site consultants all the time and that's one of the major questions they have. You know, they, they have the data right now, a lot of the data that we have, they have it. You know, they can push the button with Lightcast and some of these other services and get that data. But what the differentiator is when they meet with the staff, when they meet with the companies that are here and they meet with the school district and they meet with ACC and you bring them all to the table and they say, here's what we're doing to help you meet your needs, not just today, but for the next, you know, five years, the future workforce here. So it's not an easy task for the community to take that on because you, it's like doing entrepreneurship. You don't know that if you've got a great entrepreneurship program, whether those companies are going to stick around or they're going to go into Austin or Fort Collins, Colorado, or wherever it is. And with, you know, your, your biggest export can be your talent, your skilled talent that you just put money into, into training. And so what is it that you do that differentiate yourself? Understanding that you're not going to be able to keep everyone. But it did, you know, within the greater Austin orbit, you know, Flugerville has an opportunity here to position itself and change the narrative, you know, around the, the skills and training and whether it's higher ed or ACC, another program or another group that comes in. You know, that would be part of what we're, you know, helping you figure out what's feasible here and who can, who can we attract and who can, who can pull this off?
And we're working on that. I mean, to be fair, also to be fair to that, on that aspect, that's something that we're working on, the quality of life aspect, right? Is what you're saying, is like, okay, you, you can, I can have a cool job, but do I really want to stay here if I'm not able to have these higher end restaurants? Do there are opportunities, are, you know, things that we can do with the families? And that's our, that's what, as a council, we direct PCDC, you know, and, and our staff to go and do on that. We're working on that portion. But what we need, what I would really be interested in seeing in this, and you're, I, I guess I'm hearing that you can make that a, 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 a central aspect of what you're doing is, is the pivot. What is the pivot? How do we make the pivot? This is what you need to make the pivot right there. How long would this work study be good for?
We have to close out the grant by April thirtieth, which means all the reporting needs to be completed, all of the tasks in the strategic plan around workforce development before April the thirtieth of twenty fourteen.
I don't think that was your question.
No, my, my question is, once the study is completed, how long would this study be good for? Because the dynamic.
It's not going on the shelf, but what's the shelf life?
Yeah, the dynamics of our workforce change constantly. And, you know, two years ago, AI was not a common denominator in our homes, now it is. So, you know, are we paying this money for a, a, a study that's only going to be good six months?
No, that, that's a great question because.
It depends what Skynet tells us.
Yeah. The, uh, the goal is to put in more of a, a mechanism by which it's constantly updated. I mean, right now, the data sets that are out there and the process by which you meet with your companies on a regular basis to understand, so you make adjustments along the way. So the, the idea is that it's not like a shelf life of the data. The process though, you know, you go through it, you talk to the employers, you kind of look at what's happening in the world. If you, if you don't go through this once a year now, and I'm not saying bring me back and, you know, pay us to do it each time, but the idea is we set up data, we set up.
He said you do it for free, cool.
So on that point, I mean, I think Doug and Jim both said it. I mean, do we need it now? I mean, is, why, do we need this? Uh, if, if this study could change by the time we get to the point where we approve SEDs, I mean, should we wait on this and wait until the whole SEDs?
So at a minimum, I think it, it would be appropriate for us to, to finalize the SEDs before we approve this. Now, I'm looking at the, the consulting agreement and unfortunately, the consulting agreement doesn't really say anything other than we're going to pay you to create a report. It references an RFP and the RFP, I guess, wasn't attached to the, the packet. So if we could get a copy of that RFP, I think what we need to do is get through the, the SEDs and then say, does the RFP meet the, the needs? Cause we've said tonight, I, I've heard plenty of things where like, hey, we really want you to do this and we want to make sure you focus on that and that and that. I have no idea what you're contractually obligated to do. It's obviously not what we're, the, the softballs we're lobbing at you here. So I think, I think there's some timing that we need to, to work through and I am concerned about that April date. But I'd rather not throw good money out to get a little bit, a little bit of extra, right?
And you, you make an excellent point in terms of, do we get the, the summary story of the results? Or do we get the raw data as part of this proposal?
Do we have the data? I thought, I thought we have it, Charlie, you have it standard in our contracts.
Yeah, but it's not part of PCDC's.
Yeah, this is a PCDC agreement. Yeah, this is, this is on, this is on your name, right?
Does anyone, does anyone know off the top of their head, do we get the data?
Is they returning you?
Nope.
Well, I mean, it, it's, see, what's it say? Any material report product, whether electronic or paper form, results from the execution of this agreement shall be the sole property of the client.
Results.
I mean, I, I.
The report, material and product, I don't know if that is the underlying data.
Yeah, that's not the underlying data, that's the report material and product.
So we had it, we had an issue with that in the past where we had a study that was done and we questioned some of the results of that study, but we didn't have access to the data that those results were derived from.
So let's pull a David Rogers. Let's go ahead and to Doug's point, make sure that we have a contract that's actually applicable with what we're trying to do here instead of the stuff that we've said. We haven't lobbed softballs, these are baseball straight to his head over here. I'm surprised how he's ducked and dived really well over here with that. But I, you know, I, I, I think that something that would be relatable, and maybe that's, and that's the good part about having discussions, right? Is that maybe now something more refined to what we're, we're looking at here. It sounds like it, it would be a portion of what you're doing, but something more inclined with that. When are we supposed to, when is this coming to us? Is this next meeting?
Yep.
I believe it's the February meeting.
So the first meeting in February is when we're supposed to approve this?
I believe so.
So well, since we're putting anything else for two weeks.
We got three weeks, we got three weeks, actually, it's a fifth Tuesday.
It's got three?
It's a fifth Tuesday.
Oh, there we go.
And we can attach the RFP and also the deal points that, that he had to that as well.
And there's some, there's some possibilities, we have some serious cases.
I'm going to postpone consideration of item four G until our next meeting.
Do we want to do it till our next meeting or? I think they said, that's three weeks.
Well, I, I, I. Well, but I think we need to, I, we need to get through the SEDs before we talk about it.
Well, I, we, we, we can put it on the agenda and then based on our conversation about the SEDs, we can go ahead and, yeah, we can be like.
Especially if we're looking at an April thirtieth.
Yeah, that's why, that's, that's the reason why, I couldn't think of that date.
And if we don't, we postpone it.
Yeah, let's postpone, you know. Yeah.